All right, we don't have any work session briefings tonight, so we're moving on to Item 6A. Received presentation from Brian LaFoy of Kimbley Horn on the status of the Old Iron Bridge inspection. Mr. Joe?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a brief history for somebody who's watching tonight that hasn't been paying attention to what's been going on the last six months. But if you recall, there was five previous inspections on the bridge, the last being in 2014. There was significant section loss in the lower core of the bridge, somewhere around 50 percent in certain spots. June 19th, we actually had another workshop where we discussed it. The council made a decision at that time to do something about the bridge. We hired Mr. LaFoy and his team. They found some more significant loss, and again, recently shut the bridge, and he's going to give you an update on what he's found. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joe.
Good evening. Nice to see everyone again. Thank you for having me back. We started the project now, so staff's asked me to come back and give you an update on where we are. I want to give you just a little bit of a background that will help with some context of some of the slides we're going to see on exactly what you have out here, other than just a really cool iconic bridge. So, what you see is, it's called a Parker truss, and so the main three spans of the steel part of the bridge is made up of all the steel cord members. And what's unique about this is you have the big X-frame in the very center, and what's characteristic about this is then the diagonals out from each side of it. So that's what kind of makes up this truss, is what it's called. And there's three of them. Why that's important is this is just a load diagram. It's not this bridge, but it's just one that I had handy to be able to show you. So each one of those steel members is made up of either a member that's either in compression or tension, which means it's either pushing on itself or trying to pull itself apart. That's what the characteristics of a truss. So everything you see up there in red is what's called a tension member. Everything that's in blue is called a compression member. So why is that important? So this bridge is called a fracture-critical bridge, and the Federal Highway Administration, fracture-critical. The Federal Highway Administration defines that as a structure or component of a structure that if one of those members in tension, one of the red members, were to fail, that it could cause significant or catastrophic failure in that structure. So that's why it's important to understand the mechanics of how this structure works and why it's important to be able to evaluate these and know what's going on.
So, Brian, explain what catastrophic failure is.
The bridge falls into the river.
Okay.
So if you remember, a couple of years ago, is that catastrophic enough for you? If you remember a couple of years ago, the incident that happened in Minnesota with that bridge collapse up there, that was a fracture-critical truss bridge that collapsed. And that's exactly what happened, is one of those connections failed, and that bridge came down. So where we are is, we've looked at this as a two-step process. And the first part of that process is the evaluation phase. And that's where we are now, and that's what we're under contract to do, is to look at the bridge and figure out what the deficiencies are, be able to quantify those, and provide you with a report to tell you what we need to do about the bridge. And that's kind of broken down into three parts. We do the field evaluation, we go out and physically look at the bridge, we measure everything out there, we determine what parts of the bridge are deficient, and then we're able to look at the loading on that bridge and see how much deficiency we have now, and then be able to give you a report that says, here's where it is now, and here's what you can do to be able to potentially improve the bridge, increase the load rating, do different things that you want to do with the bridge, or be able to say, it's as good as it's ever going to get, we can't do anything else with it, here's your options for that. So that's what we'll be able to do in the report that we're starting to work on now. The next phase would be the rehabilitation, once you have that report for you to make that decision, is what do you want to do with this bridge? Do you want to restore it? It's likely never going to be a bridge that can carry vehicular traffic again. The best you can probably do with it is return it to pedestrian traffic, maybe make it into a nice kind of a deck park where you can use it for events, to see, once we're able to quantify and see if that's even possible at this point, too. So, field evaluation, we've just completed that. We completed that a couple of weeks ago. We've gone out and we've looked at everything, for the most part. We still have one thing left to do that I'll get to in a little bit later in the slide. But what that process consists of is, aside from the big steel truss part, steel truss part, the concrete approach spans on each side or part of the structure, too, that we have to look at. And those are made up of the deck, which is the concrete top surface that's got asphalt on it now, the beams, and then what we'll call them the substructure, or the columns that support the whole bridge. So looking at those, looking at the truss sections above the level of the deck, of the riding surface, so everything that you see above where you're walking on is what we looked at, the deck itself, and then underneath the bridge below the deck. And what's important under here, is I'll refer to these later, is you see the beams that are kind of running top to bottom on the screen, those are called the floor beams. Floor beams. And then the ones running side to side are called the stringers, so I'll be referring to those later in the slides. And then the final piece that we look at are the big concrete columns that hold the truss sections up that are in the river span. They're called the truss bends. So how did we look at it? Well, one thing we did, we just walked it. We just looked at everything we could see from the ground, we looked at the deck, we walked along the bottom, looked up to see what we could see, measured some things, everything that we could just get to by foot. The other way we did it from the truss portions from the deck up is we used man lifts and we just climbed. Where there were places where we couldn't get to the man lift, we climbed around it, looked at it, measured things, took photographs, documented it, and so that we had a better understanding of what we're looking at as far as some of the corrosion that's going on, the magnitude of the corrosion. And then one of the more difficult tasks was, where we couldn't see where we had to get underneath the bridge, because it's over water, there's really no access underneath there, we had to do it by what's called rope access. And so, we actually had equipment that we could string side to side, where we had climbers outside on the bridge and also underneath, and we actually had to go rope to rope, kind of swinging underneath the bridge to be able to see everything underneath and be able to document that. And then finally, we had to look at the foundations of the truss bends in the water, and so the only way to do that is to dive. So we had a dive crew out there that actually physically went in and dove. The visibility is zero, but it's all mostly by feel. There's other techniques that they can use to see a little bit. One of those is you can fill a bag up with, just like a Ziploc baggie, with clear water, push it up against there underwater, and you can kind of see some cracking, certain levels of it. So there's tricks that we can do to see a little bit, but for the most part, it's done by feel and in the blind. So what did we find? On the concrete approach spans, looking at the deck, not much, because it's got an asphalt overlay of about two inches, so there's not much of the original concrete deck structure that we can see right now. On the other hand, it's not that big of a deal. We don't really expect to see too much problem with that. Looking at it from underneath, it's in pretty good shape. So, asphalt off, I don't expect to see too much problem with the deck. For the beams, we looked at all the beams from what we could see. There's some places where you can see the reinforcing that's kind of popping through, when the reinforcing of a bridge of this age starts to corrode, it starts to pop the concrete off. And so that's what you see in some of these places. Pretty characteristic of an older bridge. This is pretty good for a bridge of this age. I'm used to seeing a lot more reinforcing steel coming through, a lot more cracking than what I see on this bridge. So these concrete approaches, in my opinion, are in pretty good shape right now. At the ends of the beams, this is where the beams come together and sit on the substructure portion of it. There's some spalling, and there's some ways to mitigate that. Again, nothing that's really a major problem that I see at this point with this age of a bridge. And then the same thing with the substructure, down with where the columns are in the ground. That's a pretty good example right there. That's probably some corroded reinforcing that you're seeing under that that's starting to cause that concrete to spall off. So on the truss sections, lots going on, lots of members to look at up there. I don't think there's a single member up there that I don't think's been hit at some point by some piece of equipment, and most of them are bent or misplaced a little bit, which isn't that big of a deal. That's pretty common as well. You see a lot of surface corrosion. This is along all the original pedestrian rail that was up on the bridge. So again, that's not too big of a deal, especially on the pedestrian portion of the rail, because it's not structural. It's just there for, at one time vehicular traffic and now for pedestrian traffic. But now the chain link fence is up there that's more up to standard code. But what's important to see here is, where you see the darker areas of the corrosion, that's where the steel has started to, called flowering. So if you picture a rosebud that's closed, and as it opens, it starts, the petals start to peel off and open up into a rose. Steel does the same thing when it starts to corrode to more significant levels, is those layers of steel start to peel off. And so we call it flowering. So that's what you're starting to see in some of the more corroded areas there, and that's pretty typical from other sections of the bridge, too. And so that's important to note on some of the more critical areas that that's what we're seeing. And so when I talk about section loss, where we say, okay, we started off with a piece of steel that was half an inch thick, but it's started to flower now, well now we may only have like half an inch of good steel. So we've lost a half an inch of capacity in that steel. Something else we noted, there's been a lot of repairs on the bridge already. We don't have a lot of history on why or when. There's really no repair drawings. We just observed it from just seeing the record drawings and just knowing how the construction was originally. For example, it's a riveted structure. They don't do rivets anymore. So when we found some steel bolts up there, there's been something that's been replaced at some point. They've replaced them, in this case, with these plates with thicker steel members, but they also didn't use not structural bolts. So that's an issue.
Brian, I may be able to help with some of that. Former Mayor Tom Scott had a meeting with me last week, and he told me that when the city took the bridge, and I believe that was in 91, when the city took ownership of the bridge, that 91 or 92, that one of the conditions of taking the bridge was that the highway department makes some repairs. So, when you said that, that triggered I, but I know when it happened, so that would have been 91, 92-ish for the city to take it.
We've been in coordination with TechStop to try to find whatever information they have, and we actually have talked to some people. We don't have anything physical, but we've talked to some people that were around there that at least have some verbal history that they could give us. So we have a little bit of information on some of the repairs, but nothing that documents saying, this is what was done, why, this is what the capacity check that was done, anything structural that we can really look at.
And if Mayor Scott's watching, if he happens to have his book of, oh, here's what they did, that would be great, but I'm pretty certain we can't put our hands on it. So I'm not volunteering that we have that. I'm just thinking that, from a timing standpoint, my assumption would be that's about the time it was done.
It's not unusual to have, not have a lot of information on older structures like this. So, but those are some things that we noted, is that even the repairs that were done are an issue and would need to be addressed, because there's, like, there's a certain amount of threads that should be sticking out from those nuts that you should see that aren't there, things like that. Again, I mentioned, a lot of the members up top have been hit or bent. Not a big deal. Those are pretty easy to fix up there, and not really an issue, but need to be quantified and be dealt with in some kind of a repair. That's just another location of where something's been hit. So these are the vertical members that are on that truss, and they have those zigzag patterns, pretty unique to it. Did I do something to make that show up? The important thing here is, again, this is another one that's, there's a couple of them that look like this. So that's another indication that that was a repair that was done, because it's no longer riveted, it's a welded connection and doesn't look the same. We did find some information out on this. Apparently, and you, some of you may know more than this than I do as well, but when the original, when the new bridge was built next to it, apparently there was an incident where a crane fell over during some flooding, and the crane hit the bridge and damaged some of the members. And this came verbally from some TechStop people that were building the bridge. And so, I guess they went in and repaired those at that point. But again, we don't have any documentation of what they did to evaluate it or anything like that. We just, all we have to go off of is what we see now, and there's some questionable things on what they did at that point, too, that we need to look at. Looking at the deck, again, there's not too much to see, and quite honestly, we didn't spend a lot of time looking at the deck, because any repair that we do to this bridge, the deck's coming off. Doesn't matter how significant. That's the only way to get underneath there and really repair that. So there's not really a point in spending a lot of time looking at the deck when it's going to come out anyway. And then back to underneath. So again, the floor beams are the ones running, in this view, where it's flipped now. So the floor beams are running across the screen, the stringers are running up and down the screen. You can see, on the floor beam, there's a lot of dark areas up where it meets the concrete. That's where most of the corrosion's happening in there, at that connection. A little bit closer view there. There's another view of where I'm talking about where that flowering's happening, where you're losing some section loss, where the stringer's attached to the floor beams. There's another close-up view there. Another picture of the bottom. So here's the big issue. This is the biggest problem of the bridge structurally right now, is where I've got that yellow circle, those are called the gusset plate. That's the bottom where basically everything comes together in that truss, all at one spot. You have all kinds of members, all kinds of rivets that attaches to the bottom cord there, the diagonals come in, the vertical members come in, all at that big gusset plate. And so you can see where the arrows are, there's some signs of some steel on the outside of the plate. Those are actually holes in some locations. That's not just surface rust. So that's, this is the corrosion going all the way through that gusset plate. So that's what we're talking about. We say 100 percent section loss. That's what that means, is there's no section of steel in those areas.
So to make sure that we're abundantly clear, on a fracture-critical bridge, these gusset plates is where the tension and the compression meet.
That's correct.
And the fact that we have holes in the steel is scary, critical, and the reason we closed the bridge.
That's correct. And if you look even closer at that area right there, that big pile of debris right there is steel that's flaked off of that gusset plate. So it's hard to tell in the picture, but the backside of that particular gusset plate doesn't hardly have any steel on it right there. So, yeah, so here's my slide right here. This is what was going to sum up what you just said, is, we're done in 2014, identified gusset plates up to about 50 percent section loss, and we've now identified some that have 100 percent section loss, which means it's gone all the way through, the corrosion's gone all the way through the gusset plates. And up to about 50 percent section loss in the other ones. So there's a significant more corrosion than there was either in the last report, or it wasn't identified in the last report that we were able to identify this time.
Last report was 15?
2014.
14, okay.
So based on this finding, is when we had the discussion with staff and recommended that the bridge be closed at this point to all traffic, pedestrian, until we can quantify what this means and what the options are to repair the bridge. Because right now, all we know is that, but we haven't been able to put any structural analysis on it yet to determine, this is your true capacity. Yes, you do have, whatever it might be, 25 percent capacity left, 30 percent, and you can open it back up to pedestrians, or we just don't know that yet. But we've found enough to show us that there's a significant amount of corrosion in this structure to make it concerning. So this is the next big issue, is that little red spot that's showing in there, that's lead. And we knew that there was lead potentially on the bridge, A, just by the age of it, and reviewing the last reports that found lead. We actually just got our initial results in today from the testing lab that we did, and there's a significant amount more than what we saw in the previous reports. So what we've identified now, on the east and west side of the bridge, is up to 13 percent lead in the coatings. 1 percent is the threshold to call it a lead abatement project. So it's very, you can call it hot when it's got bruised. So it's a very hot bridge. So we were already approaching this as a lead abatement project anyway, but this pretty much confirms it. The other thing that we're doing that we haven't had, because where I alluded to, we haven't finished all of our field work yet, is we need to take samples of the soil down below the bridge, too, because as that bridge has aged and the corrosion comes off and flakes down, there's lead in the soil. So we need to determine, is there enough to be concerned down there as well? So we haven't done that yet, because when we did the evaluation was when the river was up, and so we needed to let the river go down and have some soil that's had a chance to dry a little bit to make it easier on the lab testing. So we should get that back. We're going to do that this week, and then we should get that back in the next week or so after that, and then we'll have an idea of if there's any issues with the soil under the bridge as well. So the other conflicting part about the lead project is, to be able to mitigate that, it needs to be re-coated, however it's repaired. It has to have full containment over that structure. So that means that entire bridge has to be encapsulated, and everything that comes off has to be caught, disposed of properly. So it's not only just designing the repair to fix it structurally, it's designing something to encapsulate it that the bridge can handle while we're doing those repairs, to be able to blast it, dispose of the lead paint, repaint it. And you look at a lot of those areas where we saw those vertical members with the zigzag pattern, being able to get in there, blast that, get all that paint off. It's very expensive and tedious process to do that on a structure like this. And then the last thing we did was, as I mentioned, we looked at the foundations underwater. And so, not much to show you here in a slide, it's just divers going underwater. The cuttle looks like that. Pretty much what we found there is pretty consistent with the last 2014 report, with the exception of one of the bends, which is the one furthest to the east. There was a significant amount more of scour underneath, which means voids underneath that foundation. So we'll quantify that and be able to determine if there's an issue with that or not. Again, that's not unusual to be able to have to fix that. It's not cheap, because you have to drink water, put in copper dams, things like that, but it's fixable without too much issue on something like that. So again, just to summarize, that's where we are right now, is we've finished the field evaluation, for the most part. So we're organizing our data now. We're starting to do load analysis and be able to come back with some data to tell you what the remaining capacity in that bridge is, and put some costs with some of the options of what you can do with that structure to make your decision on how you want to proceed with that.
Brian, why don't you spend a few minutes talking about the sandblasting of the bridge and why that is tedious, and why that creates its own set of opportunities?
Sure.
And the process that, as repairs gets made, while, why, the process of Kimbley Horn designing this bridge, how that will work, and explain what you told staff about the opportunities for this to go south quickly. So we're not out of the woods until the final contract is signed, executed, completed, and they walk away, and we've dodged a bullet. So this is where we manage expectations upfront on how precarious we are, because we've now waited until the point that we almost don't have any runway, and this bridge is very close to not being savable, even though it's on the national register, and it is an iconic landmark of how we identify Bastrop. I need council and the community to understand.
Yes, ma'am. Everything you said is 100 percent accurate. To your first point on the lead and the corrosion and why that's so difficult, if you look at the sections like this, where again, everything comes together, the first process of that would be to blast everything off and be able to dispose of that lead material separately before you can start removing members and replacing it, because it's a lot easier to dispose of as slag than it is a contaminated, larger material that's going to be hard to find a place to go and manifest that and dispose of it properly. So that's the first step of that. But when you look at some of the connections on how you get in there, because you're going to have, basically it's a person with a nozzle with a sandblaster-type equipment, and he's got to get in there and get everything off to be able to put the new material on there. We're hoping that there's a lot of these members that could be salvaged, and there's just a little bit of corrosion loss, but not enough. But when you start looking at some of these, where you're trying to get in on the backside of plates, and there's a lot of the areas where there's going to be somebody basically having to blast back into his face, to be able to get into those areas, and it's just a very tedious process. And again, as I mentioned, it's got to be completely encapsulated. So typically, I've designed systems on bridges like this before, that that's all it's for, is to encapsulate that and serve as a work platform, because it's also going to serve as kind of shoring for when they go in and do the repairs as well. And typically, what it'll be is some kind of a traveling system that they can move as they go, so that they have access to the underside of the bridge, the side of the bridge, the top of the bridge, everything they need, that's basically opaque to everybody that's looking at it, to be able to capture anything that comes off of that bridge. Just that process alone is extremely expensive to design, fabricate, build up, because that's a specially-made structure just to be able to go in and repair this structure. The other part of it is, because again, it's a fracture-critical bridge, and so you can't just take pieces apart and put them back, like it was originally constructed, probably built on the ground and lifted up and done temporarily supported. You can't do that here. So in our design process, what we would have to do is figure out a sequence of what members have to be taken out, down to the, remove this bolt first, then this bolt, then this bolt, or a rivet, or whatever the case may be. And given that the contractor a specific sequence, this is what you can do. You may not do anything other than this, or you compromise the bridge significantly. And so watching the contractor out there doing that, making sure he's doing it correctly will be helpful, just because of the impacts it could have if something goes wrong. Did I address all your questions?
Well, at the end of the day, this is an 18 to 24-month process. It's very tedious. We spent some time talking about how one would go about hiring a contractor, because he is phenomenally important, and this is not where you want to go low bid. This is where you want to get your best value, and you want to have somebody, even if you have to pay extra for it, that knows what they're doing. Bonding and insurance is phenomenally important, because at any point during any of these processes, if they sandblast too much and they fracture something, we've got critical failure. If they are trying to repair it and don't repair it in the right order, we have critical failure. So this is art, this is science, and a whole lot of luck, because we are now to a point, if we do nothing, this bridge must come down. And if we do nothing, it may come down on its own. That's really where we are.
Well, and it seems that the thing that I wanted to make sure that the community understands, so Brian, don't let me get off, you can test that I'm understanding it correctly, and that is that doing nothing and letting it fall down has its own worse consequences because of all the things that you've talked about, the lead, now we're in the Colorado River. They, should the, should the bridge fall, then it becomes a whole different project.
That's right.
It doesn't just go away, oh, well, gee, that didn't work out. Now, it's a whole different project and probably even a more expensive project.
That's correct. Even to demolish and get rid of the bridge is a pretty similar process. It's still going to require a design. Just because of the lead content on there, what probably need to happen is, you still have to go in and blast and remove the lead, so you still have the containment. You still have all that same process. And then it's a matter of, how do you ultimately demolish it? Do you drop it all down at once, go in and pick it up? That's the likely scenario, rather than come in and take it a piece of it apart, because again, it's fracture-critical. You take, open the wrong piece, it's coming down anyway. So likely in a scenario like this, it's going to just come all down in some kind of an explosion-type scenario. But yes, it's also a very expensive process to do that, or if you do nothing and it falls, it could be catastrophic when it decides to corrode enough and kind of...
And then that's not going to be cheap either, is my point. So we have an expensive, an expensive, and an expensive option.
Right.
And if my memory serves correctly, we have $2 million?
Yes, ma'am, and at this point in time, and we aren't going to hold him together, but I did ask for a scope of magnitude number, and it could be as much as $5 million. We do have some debt capacity that will be freed up in the next several years that will be available as a funding option. I think the first hurdle we have to overcome is, what are our options, and what are we as a community willing to invest to get that option? Brian and I have had a conversation, and I felt very comfortable in saying that the goal here was not for vehicular traffic. What the goal was, was to have essentially a park that we could program on top of the river and be able to utilize it in a different manner, not just pedestrian traffic. Pedestrian traffic would be able to move through that, but programming it more as a park, because one of the conversations that y'all had as council is, it offers a unique perspective of one of our great assets, and that's the Colorado River that runs through our community. So Brian has that really as the target goal, but until he gets all of this information and works his calculations, we don't have any of that information. So he will be back at the end of January 1st to February, when he has some policy decisions to make. And at that point in time, we'll have some sense of how long this process will take and when we will need money. We have $2 million already allocated that came from a $4.7 million certificate of obligation sale that we did in September. So the first $2 million's in the bank, and we'll have to determine where in the process that gets us, and at what year will we need some additional funding. So when we come back in January, February with some scope of magnitude, we'll be able to offer you some funding opportunities so that y'all can make the best decision for the community.
And thank you, City Manager. And council, I feel completely confident, have no, at no point did I anticipate vehicular traffic back on it. So I think the City Manager gave him good advice, and I would like, okay, so we're all on the same page with that. I have some concerns about, I like the idea of the park and opening it back up to traffic, but in my mind, and structural was not my favorite class in school. So I mean, I get the gist of it, but I'm not throwing down with you on the design part of it in any way, shape, or form. But I remember enough of it in school that what scares me is the dead load of it completely loaded with pedestrians that are jumping up and down at fireworks. So if, if I, I would say I, and, but I don't get to vote and would like council's input, I don't care if we have to close it during fireworks where we don't have it, solid people jumping on it, you know. If, if, I don't think it's a good investment, because in my mind, that's a significant step to go from, there's 15 or 20 people running on it or walking on it kind of thing, and having hundreds of people at the same time in that dynamic load. So council, would you be okay if it was open to pedestrian, but maybe during some particular circumstances, it still had to be closed for safety?
I think that's a great point. I mean, we, you can open it up to pedestrians with this many limitations. Okay, we can open it up on a regular basis, but when we know, when you have 15 people or whichever, you know, then we'll have to close it here. So the city has some rules or some guidelines, like an elevator, you can only have this much weight. It would be perfect. The other thing I wanted to touch on, I know you said expensive, 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 no matter what you do, but if it falls in, it's not only money, who's in the water?
Right.
You know, there's lives at stake if it falls down, not just money. It's not just money sometimes.
Well, and that's exactly why the City Manager made the decision, once they got the information, to close it. And that's why it's closed, because above all, we don't want to have any life safety issues whatsoever. And Brian, I honestly, it may be like, meh, it's close enough, it's not that big a deal. I just want to make sure you've kind of got the parameters that it's... I just want to make sure you've kind of got the parameters that it's, that, that we're not saying, open it and have it as a park, and we're all assuming that means it can be solid people from end to end. I, I don't think that's the same thing. So, if that could be an impact, okay. Councilmember Ennis, did you want to say something?
I, I hope that we don't start trying to define usage too much now until this is completely done because...
Oh, absolutely.
I want to, I want to get your full report and wrap my mind about, because you may get into it and find some other things.
That's right.
And so, which might impact our defining the usage of it. So, that's my...
Yeah, I was defining afterwards.
He's not working on a design to get it back to vehicular traffic, and so, as he's doing the parameters, I want to say that we, it seems like we would be open to, if he gets to a point of, well, I can do this, but the next step is another huge hunk of money, he needs to tell us what that this is.
Sure, sure.
Madam Mayor, that's exactly the, what we plan to deliver is, is those parameters right there and be able to tell you. And we're looking at some things to help mitigate, and for not being your favorite class, you're throwing out a lot of good structural words, dynamic loading and deadload, but that's exactly what we'll do, is look at some things to be able to reduce the deadload. For example, using lightweight concrete going back on the deck. That'll save us a lot of deadload, being able to, so we'll be able to tell you that exact thing is, okay, we're going to assume this deadload and this live load of pedestrians, and maybe that's closer to what, you know, you're going to look at for a crowded bridge, and we'll be able to tell you, no, you can't do that, but you can, you can put some planters out there, you can put some of this out there for general traffic, but you cannot have a fully-loaded bridge watching fireworks. We'll be able to tell you that.
Okay. Yeah, you are the expert, and so, but we don't, we don't know, anywhere between $2 million and $5 million, that's a, that's a big range, and, and I...
I don't think you're in the $2 million range.
Well, I, I think we've pretty well agreed that's not enough. We just don't know how much more we're going to have to come up with. So, really counting on your expertise. I personally think outstanding presentation. Really, really appreciate your knowledge and it's, council, it feels like yet another one of those things that we can't just keep kicking, kicking down the road. Mayor Protim Nelson?
I'm, I'm just assuming that the, the scrutiny of the TCEQ and LCRA is going to impact or possibly impact our cost factors in here?
Just by meeting the regulatory guidelines, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Are you saying that maybe they'll help with the funding? Is that what?
No, no. I'm saying they'll help with jacking that cost up.
Yeah. All right. Well, we, City Manager, did you get what, you need, really, really appreciate your presentation and the knowledge.
Thank you. Pleasure being here again.
Thank you very much. So, for the community to know clearly, this was new information for us. We're not in a point, we're not voting on anything, we're not on the point, at the point of making a decision, and it will be posted on the agenda when we're ready for the next, it, it may end up being a work session, depending on what type of information that we have.
Just so they know, it's going to be closed for the next future for a while.
That is correct. No one should be planning to, and, and quite frankly, I thought that the barricading that was done, was done quite well. You would really have to make an effort to go over.
And let me just say this, if you make that effort, you're going to meet Bastrop's finest.
Yes, you are.
This, we're not playing. This truly has imminent safety issues. That fence and that double fence are there for a reason. You've heard the presentation. We are not taking this lightly, and we have been abundantly clear. You will be charged with criminal trespass, and we're not going to play about it, and there's no good excuse. So, please just don't. I think that it is safe for us to assume that this bridge will be closed until we have a ribbon-cutting ceremony on it, and we've lived through it, and there's still a bridge.
Looking forward to that ribbon-cutting for sure. And City Manager, I know you would not allow this to happen, but I don't plan on us having